All right. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the March 6th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. First is our land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat people. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling of the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman. Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
All present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you're wanting to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. Now, we are going to do ceremonial matters. A is proclamation recognizing March 8th, 2024 as International Women's Day, and Councilmember White will be reading that.
Great. Thank you. Yes. Whereas, International Women's Day began in the United States in 1909 and has been celebrated internationally since 1911 and is an official holiday in 28 countries. And whereas, on March 8th, people around the world honor women and girls recognizing their contributions and supporting their political and social rights. And whereas, women in many parts of the world are facing war and violence, increased regression, repression, shortages of basic necessities caused by conflicts and by the climate crisis. And whereas, women dealing with these challenges, as well as women of color, Black, and Indigenous women, and women who face oppression based on religion, disability, gender identity, or preference, language, culture, or class, have unique perspectives and knowledge that help us all work towards social and environmental justice, peace, and safety locally and globally. And whereas, all of us benefit from the talent and the spirit of social action that women and girls have made to our communities, cities, nation, and world. We continue to thank and honor our women and girls, appreciate their achievements and contributions to our society, and support their voices as they work to bring peace, justice, and harmony to the world. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes March 8th, 2024, as International Women's Day and encourages all community members to take action on the international theme of Invest in Women and to observe this day by participating in local events and working to create a more inclusive world where all genders are able to live to their fullest potential, free from discrimination, oppression, and violence, dated March 6, 2024, by our mayor, Mayor Matthews. Also wanted to add, if you haven't checked out Zero to Fierce, it's going on through this week and through Playhouse Art. So, thank you.
We'd like to thank the City Council for once again acknowledging International Women's Day. We have locally been having a free event for 14 years now over at the Arcata Playhouse. And so this week, it's March 8th, Friday, is International Women's Day. And because of scheduling conflicts, our event will be March 10th on Sunday night. We're lucky to have Susan Seaman from the Arcata Economic Development Council speak about the theme of Invest in Women in order to accelerate equity. And what's really fun is that we, for years now, have had Jam Bramlett and Leslie Quinn leading singing of peace songs, freedom songs. It's a really fun event for any women and men that want to attend. It's free. It's from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Arcata Playhouse. And about International Women's Day, the proclamation said it all, but it really is an international event. It began with women workers protesting women's working conditions. And it actually was pretty much a socialist event eventually, and it spread to being totally international. It's a legal holiday in 27 countries, and there's marches, there's celebration, there's dancing all over the world. So we're lucky to have a local celebration as well. So we invite everyone to the Playhouse on Sunday night. We're in competition with the clock changes. We're in competition with the Oscar night. But ours is a live event. You can always record the Oscars, you know? So, anyway, I'd like to invite all of you. It's a good night to just celebrate ourselves as women. Thank you. And I guess I should say that we're the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. It's a big title. We go by WILF usually, but we are just the Humboldt chapter of an international organization that's recognized by the United Nations. We have a table at the United Nations, and the international representatives are consulted on women's issues. So, anyway, this is Linda, and she's also part of our group.
Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, Carolyn, and thank you, councilmembers, for your support through the proclamation. It's really encouraging to see the leadership of the City of Arcata being represented by women and how the city members and the citizens in this city have elected you or hired you to be in these positions. So I applaud all of you for taking leadership roles and being role models for the rest of the people in the community. I do want to say that as a part of a, we're a local chapter as part of an international group, and we have taken a position locally, as well as the international and national group of WILF. In terms of a ceasefire, we support that and want that to be part of our peace message throughout the world. So just wanted to share that with you. Thank you again for your support, and please come on Sunday evening.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is in recognition of Sunshine Week, March 10th through 16th, 2024, and that will be read by Councilmember Schaefer.
In recognition of Sunshine Week, March 10th through 16th, 2024. Whereas Sunshine Week is a national initiative to start a dialogue on the importance of open government and freedom of information. And whereas Sunshine Week is a nonpartisan initiative whose supporters are conservative, liberal, and from every group in between, Sunshine Week participants include print, broadcast, and online news media, civic groups, libraries, nonprofits, schools, and others interested in the public's right to know. And whereas, James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives. And whereas, an open government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust in their government and in the government's ability to serve the people effectively. The free flow of information keeps the government process honest and robust. Sunshine Week empowers people to play an active role in their government at all levels and strengthens their access to information that makes their lives better and their community stronger. And whereas, protecting every person's right to access public records and government meetings is a high priority. And whereas, the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County supports the goals of Sunshine Week and provides residents with nonpartisan education through public forums, publications, and presentations, assists with voter registration, and encourages informed participation in the government. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes March 10th through 16th, 2024 as Sunshine Week and encourages all residents to educate themselves about the government processes that affect their daily lives, dated March 6, 2024, and signed by Meredith Matthews, Mayor. And Jessica Slater, the co-president of League of Women Voters, is here.
My name is Jessica Schlochter, and I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. The League of Women Voters is a people's organization that has fought since 1920 nationally and in, and 1956 in Humboldt County to improve our government and engage all Americans in the decisions that impact their lives. The League operates at a national, state, and local levels through more than 800 state and local leads in all 50 states and as well as in DC, the Virgin Islands, and Hong Kong. We never endorse or oppose political parties or candidates, but we are a political organization. Formed from the movement that secured the right to vote for women, the centerpiece of the League's efforts remain to expand participation and give a vote, a voice, to all Americans. Our issues are grounded in our respected history of making democracy work for all Americans. I encourage anyone interested in our local League to reach out to see how you can get involved. Thank you.
There is no report by commission or committee, so now we are going to go to early oral communications.
What about March?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Thank you. The proclamation in recognition of March for Meals Month, March 2024. There is not anybody here to accept this tonight, but we will make sure to get it to them.
And then I just, I had a point of order. I wanted to, I know the, I believe it's item 11, our resolution for City of Arcata calling for peace in the Middle East. We've had a lot of people looking forward to that topic for several meetings, and so I would like to make a motion that we move that up a bit and just handle that right after oral communications. How the rest of you feel?
I would second that, and I would also, well, if I can make part of a motion, I would like to keep it one hour long. So moving it, I would like to have it just one hour, and that would, for two minutes, that would be 30 people that could speak. I don't know if anyone's willing to do that or not. I guess not. Well, I'll just second it for as long as we have.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Schaefer, Atkins Salazar, and a second by Councilmember Stillman. All in favor? Aye. All right. Now we are at early oral communication. The City Council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So if you are here to speak on the resolution, this is not, this is not the time to talk about that. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral, at the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes. There will also be time at the end for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item and again at the end of the meeting. Please make your way up to the podium, raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or press *9 if you're calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. So this is 15-minute period. Go ahead.
I come here all the time. I come here in a very exhausted state today. I wheel around the Redwood Peace and Justice Center sign partly as exercise, partly as visibility. So that's one of the reasons I'm exhausted, because I went up to get a frozen yogurt up at Redwood Yogurt, and I wheeled it all the way up the hill. But I want to let people know that I sometimes am pretty serious about what I'm talking about here. But I do have fun, and I play trivia. But it's really interesting how, in having fun playing trivia, some serious concepts come out. And one of the trivia questions was about, what do you call the front of a building? A facade. And one of the people I played with told me about how facade organizations, or taking care of the facade of an organization, is what a lot of people do. And sometimes what's behind that facade is something that we really need to take care of. So I have come here before in the past, and Councilmember Schaefer appreciated, I think, it most of all, but I talked about the THC and the CBD. And that's transparency, truth, and trust, honesty, humaneness, and humility, and caring compassion, and connectedness. And the CBD is courage and bravery and boldness. And so I actually have some symbolic THC/CBD pills for you, and I'd like Councilmember Schaefer to hold on to them. So I will. And you, there's one for each of you, and you can figure out whichever one fits the concept for you.
Thank you, Joanne.
So thank you.
Anybody else for early oral communication in person? Here, get up. This is for items that are not on the agenda.
I'm Daniel Malloy and live on, right off Escada Court in Janes Creek. And I'm wanting to see about getting one of the blinking crosswalks. There's already been one death there, and people going, like when you're crossing it, I live right there with the wine barrels. But when they're going south and take a right-hand turn in there, and when I, when I've gone through and start walking with my dog, and it's a one-lane, both-way, shared-traffic road, and, but it gets very dangerous and really needs to have, you guys are doing great with, been here since 98. Kim can, knows me well, but, you know, we need to have something, there's already been one death, and it's just going to continue there. So plant that seed, please let it save more lives, or save lives, yeah.
Of course. Thank you.
I wanted to just ask you, the cross streets, could you just say it again? Janes Creek and?
Spiny Park. Spiny Park, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Everyone kind of, you know it.
Could I, I've been receiving other emails from constituents for some time about this. Jennifer Mariposa Garcia was the young mom that died.
We can agendaize this.
I was just wondering how we might move forward on that, get it on the agenda.
We can talk about it at agenda setting. Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else for early oral communication?
Good evening. I'm Craig Johnson. I live around the 900 block of Bayside Road. And my neighbor approached me today because his fire insurance is going to be canceled. His company is leaving the state, and now he's going to be having to look for new insurance. The problem with that is the State Commissioners Board of Insurance Companies has re-designated Arcata, I believe. And this is really crazy for our neighborhood because we're in a coastal zone, we're literally flooded out a lot of the time. So some other areas in Southern Humboldt, Supervisor Bushnell just had a town hall meeting and had the insurance commissioner present trying to work on that there. And I was at a Board of Supervisors meeting maybe a month ago, and our lobbyist for the county is already working on this at the state level with California Fair Plan. So we need to look at getting this on a future agenda here in Arcata. This is going to be a heavy lift. If this is going to start happening, I'm going to alert the realtors, because this is going to be really hard for people buying and selling homes. And this is already a huge problem in some of our rural parts of the county. One last thing I would look at is, one thing we did in Southern Humboldt is we became Firewise certified. We started with the Benbow area, then we did Redway and Garberville. And that gave us personally, for our home down there, about $800 savings. And if that's a savings, you can imagine how much the insurance actually is. It's ridiculous. And the neighbor that approached me is an elderly couple, and they're paying at the moment about 900, and now they're going to have to go for Fair Plan, and I'm guessing it's going to quadruple at least. So I ask that you put this on a future agenda, and we can work on this as a community, because I feel it's going to be a real heavy lift. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in person for early oral communication? All right. Seeing none, let's go to Zoom.
Go on, let's go for early oral communication.
All right. And then I'm going to close early oral communication, and let's get to new business. We're considering Resolution Number 234-36, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, calling for peace in the Middle East. The next item on our agenda is Resolution Number 234-36. This item has been subject of discussion in these chambers for several meetings, and the council has heard hours of public comment, read numerous emails, and spoken with many residents of the issue. Tonight, I expect that several members of our public will desire to speak on this resolution, and I would like to hear from as many individuals as possible while maintaining order and ensuring that we get to the remainder of the city business this evening. So before I start tonight, can I get a show of hands in the chamber and a show of hands on Zoom on how many people are speaking on this item tonight? And five on Zoom? All right. Six on Zoom? Okay. So.
Seems like we can do three, we can do three minutes, and we can do an hour.
Okay. Oh, sorry. No, we're going to do three minutes each for an hour, and there will not be seating of any time for this. So can we get a staff report?
Mayor and council, this item has come before you at several of your last meetings, and actually during the last meeting at the end of early oral communications, the mayor looked to the council to just ask the question of, is this something that you would like to agendize for a conversation? And at that time, there was a majority of the council that wished to put this on tonight's agenda. I think that, you know, I'll just share that there's been continued work around cooperation, collaboration within the community of people that are, I think, looking at many different sides of a very complex war in the Middle East and trying to come together with language that would help bind and lift Arcata and not further divide based on, you know, some of the conversations that we had three or four months ago compared to how they've evolved to what will be before you tonight. There was a draft resolution that was included in your packet that was just based on a lot of the feedback that you had received, comments that the council has made at past meetings, and feedback that we've gotten, you know, over the course of the last couple of weeks. When we get to that point, I'm happy to pull that up on the screen. There are also copies of that language that are on the chair sitting in the back for anybody who's here in the audience and would like to see or work from that language. The language is, you know, the privilege of the council to make modifications to if that's a discussion that you wish to have, and we can do that on the screen tonight if you wish. So with that, I'll turn it to you.
All right. I am going to go straight to public comment, and it is 6:23. So let's go. Everybody gets three minutes. I would ask everybody that wishes to speak to line up now, just so we can keep in mind how many people are speaking. Thank you so much.
Good evening, councilmembers. Excuse me. I'm Rabbi Bob Rottenberg, resident of Arcata, affiliated with Temple Beth El in Eureka. I'm a member of Temple Beth El's Anti-Semitism Task Force, I'm a member of the True North Organizing Network, and I'm a member of the Humboldt Interfaith Fellowship. I want to thank you and commend you all, especially Mayor Matthews, for all the work you've done to get us to this point. It certainly has been a long haul. I am in support of the proposed resolution. However, I would like to offer three amendments for your consideration, and I believe you have them in front of you, but I'll go through them. Pretty simple amendments. The first one replacing, replaces the original wording with the following language, "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, calling for ceasefire in the Israel-Palestine conflict." Middle East is a huge area, so I would urge you to bring that down a little bit. We're talking about Israel-Palestine. The second amendment I would, I would like to offer, in the third bullet point, that it would read, I would like to add "to Gaza" at the end of that bullet point. So it would read, "Unrestricted delivery of humanitarian assistance and restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza." Make sure that that's the place where it really needs to, where this aid needs to go. And I would offer, I would like to offer a third amendment to add at the end of the resolution the following language, and this is the sort of boilerplate, "Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is sent to the offices of President Joe Biden, Vice President Kamala Harris, Governor Gabe Newsom, and so on, and so on, and so on," ending with urging them to take immediate action, to use their position and influence to end the violence, and take significant steps toward peace in the region. So I just offer those for you, for your consideration. And again, thank you for getting us to this point.
Thank you. And I'll just note before the second speaker, those were passed out at the beginning of the meeting. When he got here, the city clerk has put copies on your dais.
I'm Dan Shaheen. I'm a Palestinian-American. I'm a citizen of Arcata, proud citizen, prouder than ever today because you guys changed your mind. You didn't want to put it on the agenda. You heard from over 1,500 Arcata citizens who signed in favor of a ceasefire resolution. You listened to input from various parts of the community, and now here we are at the agenda. So I want to thank you, applaud you for taking a bold move. That is overdue, but much appreciated. I second everything that Rabbi Bob just said as far as his amendments. I think that the language is acceptable to me, but vague. And in the interest of clarity, we should be spelling out where these things are happening and why we're against them and who we want to send them to. So I agree with that. Even without that, I just have to say that anything that encourages mutual ceasefire, exchange of hostages, unrestricted delivery of humanitarian assistance, most importantly in my mind, mutual respect for international law, these are things that I think we can all get behind as a community. I think they're uncontroversial, and I think you'd have to work really hard to convince me that they're not something that I support. So I thank you all for reconsidering this, and I hope you all vote yes. I would love to see unanimous vote, but I'll take what I can get. So thank you for thinking about it.
Thank you.
My name's Andrea Armin. I represent in this moment the Humboldt Quaker, Humboldt Friends Meeting, the Quakers. And I also want to thank the City Council for so much work. He's my support person.
Oh, not so far.
So I'm going to read a letter to the editor that we wrote as a meeting published earlier this year, in the beginning of the year. A few words to update have been added, but the letter is, "Editor, members of the Humboldt Friends Meeting, your local Quakers, are saddened and disturbed that the United States government vetoed a December 8th resolution by the United Nations, asking for immediate ceasefire, immediate humanitarian ceasefire in the Holy Land. The ceasefire would have saved lives of both Palestinians and Israelis. We understand there is no quick solution to the longstanding conflict between Israel and Palestine, but common sense tells us to at least stop the carnage. We continue to call for an immediate ceasefire, and we ask for unrestricted movement of critically needed humanitarian aid to Gaza. We encourage members of the community to ask that our elected officials, Jared Huffman, Alex Bedea, and LaFonza Butler, support a call to ceasefire and oppose the further transfer of weapons of destruction. Our stand is consistent with the Friends Committee on National Legislation, which is a national nonpartisan Quaker advocacy organization. On December 8th, SCNL, Friends Committee on National Legislation condemned both the attack by Hamas on Israel and Israel's retaliatory violence while calling on world leaders to press for de... press for deescalation and restraint in Gaza and southern Israel. Also, we encourage people to investigate the long list of Israeli-Palestinian peace groups. There are ordinary people on both sides of the border, working tirelessly in their communities and across divides to achieve peace and independence for Israelis and Palestinians. These people set an example to look past divisive us versus them thinking and to search for common ground. Thank you, Humboldt Friends Meeting."
Thank you so much. And again, I'm sorry about shooing your person.
So, Myrtle Town, Jeffrey Harris. So, I don't actually recognize the Palestinian identity as it's proposed. I see them as a subset of a more general Muslim-Arab identity, and they do have 22 such states at this point in time and only one Hebraic state, so I think that should be a more reasonable comparison to make. And I'm actually opposed to a ceasefire. Temporarily halting hostilities to the south and west of Israel may be permitted for prisoner exchanges and for allowing free passage out of combat zones, however otherwise, I'm utterly opposed to admitting to oppose ceasefire. This is just an old Arab trick in which a weaker entity attempts to weaken and to bring down a stronger force. Also, I'm unwilling to accept a surrender of Hamas. They are to be obliterated thoroughly, utterly, meticulously what they did on October 7th, 2023 was so heinous as to preclude any attempts at restitution, forgiveness, or redemption. I have an alternative plan for dealing with the situation there in the Near East. One, get back the hostages, there's a little argument there. Two, execute the members of Hamas. Three, leave in relocation of some of the folks in that area. Four, leave in some degree of reorganization of the territories. To the right of the Likud Party are the religious linus in Atsumah Yehuda, Jewish strength parties, a lot of which is actually more right-wing than AIPAC's plan of support. My politics are somewhat to the right of this. Edomar Ben-Jabir, the leader of Atsumah Yehuda, the Jewish power party, is now the Minister of National Security in the Israeli cabinet. He has a plan, I'm going to share that now. Among the most prominent policy positions laid up by Jen Javir and Atsumah Yehuda, either in the party's manifesto or verbally include one, encouraging Arab cities of Israel to immigrate, annexing the West Bank without representation in that matter, imposing the death penalty for terrorists, and there would be some wildfire used on riots, immunity from prosecution for IDF soldiers for military actions they carry out, six, overhauling the legal system so as to re-legislate certain initiatives. I'm in favor of these. Okay, so there's also this section on the war. Okay, so the goal was to extend the sovereignty to all parts of the historical land of Israel such as were determined during the Six-Day War period. Okay. So there'd be some degree of immigration. Okay, in an interview with the Jerusalem Post 19, there was made some specification as what would be involved in this. Okay, I'll continue this at a later date.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Sam Newark. Wow, Jeffrey, you need a hug. Well, I did like the revisions that Rabbi Bob offered. I have a couple more I'd like to request. I think after immediate, it should say permanent mutual ceasefire, because the one party could just say, oh, we had a ceasefire, and then it's over tomorrow, and what we want is a permanent ceasefire. And I think in the line that says mutual respect for international law, that's a bit vague, it's quite vague, because under international law, Gaza is an occupied territory according to the United Nations, but Israel doesn't recognize that. So Israel doesn't really recognize international law, so I would like to request that you add the words "and the authority of the International Court of Justice at The Hague," because they do represent international law. And I thank you for your patience. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hello, Dave Mizerv. I wanted to also thank you for bringing this back up, for getting it on the agenda, and for doing something that, coming up with wording that perhaps will be acceptable to a broad range of people. Because the sort of conflict that there was at the last couple of meetings is just not what we want to see. And what we want to see is some sort of unity, but we also want to see a call for a ceasefire. So I totally support what Rabbi Bob's amendments. I think they're good. They at least mention Gaza. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to say we're going to send humanitarian aid to the Middle East, though it wouldn't be a bad idea. But it's certainly, what we want right now is for humanitarian aid to be going to Gaza. And we do want, I think, one good thing about your resolution is that it does call for peace in the Middle East. It calls for a ceasefire in the Middle East. So in a way, it's even broader than calling just for a ceasefire in Gaza. So I think to both have that Middle East view of it and also to look at Gaza in particular, which has sparked this movement for a ceasefire, I think is very appropriate. And so I want to, again, thank you for doing that. I hope that you can come together and vote for it. And the other thing is that it, if this passes, it really, no matter exact what the wording is, the purpose of passing a resolution is to get the word out that the people of Arcata are supporting a ceasefire and supporting peace. And that's the message you're going to give, no matter what the minutia of the wording is. So I, again, I appreciate what you're doing. I hope you'll move forward with it. And, you know, I hope that we can change that statement that has been so divisive into "from the river to the sea, a land where all are safe and free." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your leadership. My name is Jeffrey Robinson. I'm a local plumber. I do a lot of work in around this area. I also worship with Humboldt Friends Meeting, where we work to remove all occasion for war. I also volunteer with the Democratic Party. I am really grateful that you brought forward this resolution. This, it seems like it goes a long way towards where we need to go. I feel that we need to take it a step further, as I'll explain. But this is a good first step. This is an excellent first step. I feel that in this, we need to recognize that the leadership of Israel is not inclined to cease killing Palestinians in the current moment. That whatever thing is telling us now is that as much as Biden keeps on saying, you need to stop killing so many people, we hear Netanyahu say things like, "I clarify that any arrangement in the foreseeable future with an accord or without an accord, the State of Israel must have security control over the entire territory west of the Jordan River. That's a necessary condition. It clashes with the principle of sovereignty." What can you do? Well, he can do a lot, but he has stated there that he does not intend to make peace. And that is something that we need to recognize and at least consider the cessation of shipment of arms to Israel. I feel that this is something that we need to demand from the Biden administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chip Sharp. I live in Bayside. And I had thought my comments would only be about 10 seconds, and that's, thank you for finding wording that I feel restores the balance to it that many of us were looking for. I had been trying to come up with other words to add that would make it balanced, and I think you stripped it down to the core, the heart of what we were trying to do. So thank you very much for that. I wouldn't be surprised if we don't come back at some point and say we need a resolution going to Washington, D.C. to cut off the flow of arms. But for now, this is wonderful. I don't know what else to call the Middle East. I realize that's a Western-centric term, but I think calling for peace in that area, not just in Gaza, not just in Israel, but I think the title is fine the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul Patino, Arcata. Thanks a lot. I appreciate all of you for whatever part you played in this, especially those of you that decided to change your minds and bring it back. It's not the easiest thing to do. I think that what Jeffrey Robinson said and Chip, I think, following up with something about, don't send any more weapons, that'll help the ceasefire actually continue. So thanks a lot. I appreciate what you've done, and no more to say.
Thank you.
I'm not good at public speaking at all, but I am Jewish, and so I feel like I have to come to things like this to show up as a Jewish person who does not support Israel because I've seen, I've been to several of these meetings, and I've seen a lot of different opinions. I think I definitely support what Rabbi Bob, his revisions, and I really appreciate what Sam said. And I also agree that this is a statement, and I think that we need to be thinking about divestment and we need to be thinking about not supporting Israel. So I think we all have to, Jewish people, have to search within ourselves about what we think it means to be a Jewish person and, you know, our identities. And I really, really have strongly believe in human rights, and it just tears me up what's happening. And I know the history of that region pretty well because I've studied anthropology and archaeology, and I know that both people are indigenous to that region, and I want to see Palestinians treated as human beings and that they have a place there. And peace activists in Israel now want a one-state solution. They want equal rights for everyone. That's the side of what's right. And yeah, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Carrie, and thank you for hearing us on this. And the fact that the council is willing to stand behind a ceasefire and peace in the Middle East is great. I want to reaffirm what's been spoken about in more specific language, because, and this just occurred to me as I was in line here, to be as vague as the Middle East is somewhat like if this bridge here on Seventh Street was destroyed, and we said, we need functional roads in Humboldt, or we need functional roads in California, when we need the Seventh Street Bridge rebuilt, we need a ceasefire in Gaza because that's where over 100 civilians are being massacred every day. And that's where thousands of children are starving now. And that's where an average of 10 children are losing an arm or leg every day, and many of them are being amputated with no anesthetics. So the specificity of the language and also of the direction to our president, because he and his cabinet are the ones really holding the reins to apply the leverage on the Israeli officials to make these changes. And the last piece is I'd also like to reaffirm the permanence of a ceasefire because they are speaking now, Vice President Kamala Harris, just a few days ago, gave a speech calling for a ceasefire, and then the crowd goes wild for at least six weeks. So we will pause a series of massacres for six weeks, and what, the humanitarian aid may or may not get in because Israel is being allowed to blockade it. So people could still be starving for those six weeks, or some aid goes in, and then in six weeks, we end the pause and genocide begins again. We need a lasting ceasefire in Gaza, and our president and his entire cabinet need to hear that from us, and to hear it from you as a council of the city would be that much more affirmative. So thank you.
Thank you.
My fellow Americans, I come to you here today hoping to inspire in your hearts a remembrance of the spirit of liberty that first united a once-divided people into a mutual whole. It was Thomas Jefferson who initially penned the words proclaiming that all men are created equal and possessed unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So I ask you, my friends, where is there any equality in the genocide occurring in Gaza? After the Hamas attack in October of 2023, Times Magazine reported that Congress wasted little time devising an aid package to bolster Israel's war against the terror group. The initial proposal was for $2 billion to supplement the $3.8 billion that the United States already sends to Israel every year. But by the time the President Biden sent Congress a formal request on October 20th, he wanted seven times more than that for Israel, $14 billion. Yet in the months of far greater devastation that followed on the Gaza Strip, it was only until five days ago when President Biden finally announced that the U.S. would be dropping food aid into Gaza as the humanitarian crisis deepens, and Israel continues to resist opening additional land crossings to allow more assistance into the war-torn Strip. What happened to the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness that all men possess? In the words of Noah Webster, the founding father of American scholarship and education, alas, my friends, too much liberty is no liberty at all. If a constitutional legislature cannot redress a grievance, a mob never can. People may have grievances, perhaps, and no man would more readily hold his hand up to redress them than myself, but give me anything but mobs, for mobs are the devil in its worst shape. It was because of these words that a total of 55 delegates attended the Constitutional Convention of 1787 and hammered out a constitution that continues in amended form to this day. So I ask you, my countrymen, is the act of waging war against our fellow man anything less than the workings of a mob? War prevents the operation of law, and law is the security of life and property. Nay! What is more of liberty? The man who encourages war to prevent the operations of law ceases to be free or safe, for the same principle which leads a man to put a bayonet to the breast of a judge will lead him to take property where he can find it. And when the judge dare not act, where is the loser's remedy? And when the judge dare not act, where is the loser's remedy? The path to recovery starts here. It begins now. Sign the treaty for peaceful resolution.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello again. My name's Joanne McGary. And I do so appreciate that we are finally talking about this from the dais, from the podium. And I appreciate how the screens are split here, so that everybody who's watching from wherever they are can see you and see me at the same time. I told you I was exhausted. I'm exhausted by this whole struggle to get our city to not be a bystander in this horrible, horrible crisis that's happening in a place called Gaza. And we need the word ceasefire, and we need Gaza, and we need permanent, and we need no more weapons from us. That's the US, United States. There's been a lot of people who are afraid. There's a lot of fear going around. We cannot afford to be afraid at times like this. We must overcome our fear. We need to think about the needs of other people as much as we need to think about our own needs. That is the only way we can survive in this world. Thank you for finally putting this on the agenda. Thank you for finally discussing it. Thank you for finally, hopefully, passing something that send a message that the city of Arcata, Gudini, the place that we all are here living in, because we care about this place, but we care about people in other places as well. So, thank you for doing this resolution and ceasefire Gaza and permanent and no US weapons. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that wishes to make in-person comment, please do so now. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mike Wilson here. I just wanted to thank you for the work that it took to get to this place. I want to support the intention and the intent of the resolution. As someone like you, we've done many resolutions, most are imperfect by everyone's standards. But that doesn't mean they don't have relevancy and reason to happen. And I just want to thank you for, again, the intention, the process, and the relationship building that has gone on to get to this place. And so, with that, I don't have any offerings of amendments or anything like that. I just know that what you're engaged in has value and I want to thank you for your time and your efforts in this. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Last call for public comment, and then I'm going to go to Zoom.
Okay. I think I'm the youngest person in the room. I just want to represent young people and say, young people are also looking for a ceasefire in Gaza and that I'm glad to be here. And we're, a lot of us are really tired, because we're working long hours. But I'm happy to be here. I want a ceasefire in Gaza. Young people are for it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right. We are going to go to Zoom. We had six people that had their hands raised on Zoom, so let's take them.
Our first one is Natasha. Go ahead, Natasha. Natasha, can you unmute? All right. I'm going to come back to you, Natasha. Let's try Sherry. Go ahead, Sherry. We'll see if it's on our side.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Sherry.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I care deeply about everyone in our community who has felt uncomfortable or even frightened in the time since October 7. Everyone who has commented obviously has a great amount of emotional investment in how this issue is resolved. I want to be on the right side of history and I want to get to the root of the issues I find myself interested in. Since October 7, I have tried to find out why this issue hasn't been resolved. The issue of Israel and the Palestinians has not had a resolution since the modern nation of Israel was established in 1948 by the League of Nations, despite multiple attempts by many of the world's greatest diplomats over the years. And I listened to a fascinating podcast that went a long way toward answering this question for me. I highly recommend looking up the State of a Nation podcast on YouTube or the usual audio podcast platforms, specifically the episode posted on February 29. It's called Colonizers, Communists, Czarists? The discussion explains the perspectives of both the modern Zionists and the Palestinians starting in the 1880s. It goes a long way toward explaining the animus that continues to this day and may shine a light for a path forward. I highly recommend it. FYI, there is a six-week ceasefire on the table that will allow the cessation of violence, the exchange of all the hostages and prisoners, and the provision of aid to Gaza. Israel has agreed to this and we are waiting for Hamas to respond. Regarding our local situation, I hope that the current resolution is passed as written with the adoption of Rabbi Rottenberg's suggestions. And I hope that everyone in our community can go back to feeling comfortable, safe, and welcome in our Keta. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
All right. We're going to go back to Natasha. Natasha, I think that was on our side, so just go ahead. You should be fine. Go ahead, Natasha.
You guys hear me?
We can.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, I second, or at this point, like 10th, what Rabbi said about the ceasefire resolution. And I just wanted to point out a couple of quotes that Netanyahu has said with much heavy heart for me, and I'm sure everybody who is Palestinian and of the Amalek people would agree. This goes back to biblical times, so you must remember what Amalek has done to you. So, there's a holy Bible. And we do remember. So, this is what the Lord Almighty says, the prophet Samuel tells Sal, "I will punish the Amalek," excuse me for butchering that, "for what they do to Israel when they waylaid them as they came up from Egypt. Now, go attack the Amalek." I can't say that very well, sorry. "And totally destroy all that belongs to them. Do not spare them. Put to death men and women, children, and infants, cattle, and sheep, camels, and donkeys." So, I just wanted to point out that what's happening goes back to biblical times. And I mean, that's his, this is Netanyahu quoting things like this, that he wants to destroy them. And it just reminds me so much of why, you know, we're going to let them repeat history. We're not going to be courageous and change, you know, the wording to be specific. To me, if we can't do it for our children, then, you know, what are we living for if we're not living for our children? And I know if this was happening over here, for example, my child is, he's African-American and I know he faces things that privileged white people in these small towns up here don't have to face. And if this was happening to, you know, back, going back in time and bringing it full circle and it was happening to, let's say, African-American people over here and they were just pinpointing them and saying they need to go back to Africa, I mean, I would, I would, you know, I would want everyone in the world to stand up and be courageous and not specific, because courage starts with showing up and letting ourselves be seen. You know, we have to be, we have to be loud on this and I don't understand why, there would be no other option but to be loud when we know that children are being murdered for serious crimes and they're a victim of something that they have no control over. And it's going back to even biblical times. We're living that life still. We should be progressing.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Alice. Go ahead, Alice.
Thank you so much. I feel that our community is at a crucial point. Perhaps it's the point in time where we can clearly identify that the leaders of our community are so caught up in creating the facade of a community that rejects violence, hate speech, and racism of any kind, the facade of a community that embraces peace, justice, and respect for all. Or it's the point where we can say, ah, yes, that was it. That's when we stood up against hate, against fear. Where we stood up for what was right and good and just. We joined in with those other 70-plus cities who were brave leaders, who inspired others to show compassion, who didn't back down when things got political, complicated, and scary, who were not afraid to call a genocide, a genocide, who looked at those soul-crushing images, videos, and stories coming from Gaza and didn't think that they should do something, because maybe someday that could be us. Instead, they knew that they must do something, because that is us. Those are our elders, our neighbors, our friends, our parents, our aunts, our uncles, our wives, our husbands, our sisters, our brothers, our children. Those are our children. From those children whose voices we've heard pleading for help, for someone to come and save them, to the children who were silenced under the rubble dropped by bombs the United States paid for. I do not know how we can go on another single minute without announcing to the world that we demand a permanent ceasefire. We demand an end to the senseless, horrific, systematic genocide of our own family. I want us to look back in our communal history on this night that we stood up as a community of love, a community who takes bold action to protect its people against propaganda, oppression, fear, violence, and war. I, along with my children Madison and Grayson Finan and my husband Jonathan Finan, are requesting that your resolution mentions Palestine, that your resolution empowers a plea for the unrestricted supply of food, water, fuel, and medicine into the Gaza Strip, and that your resolution for a permanent ceasefire is directed to our president and to our congress members. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Sandra. Go ahead, her Sandra.
Hi. Yes, Sandra is my name. Thank you. So, thank you so much for putting this on the agenda. And, you know, to the folks in the room that helped others in the community learn about this council meeting, I'm one of those people that learned about it through them. So, thank you for that, all of you. I'm really proud of Arcata today. And I am here to say that I am in favor of this ceasefire resolution and that I really hope that you pass it. I support an immediate ceasefire and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, and I especially support that they get unrestricted aid. There's a lot of suffering going on there right now. And I would also really like to see the US stop funding these atrocities with our tax dollars and no longer provide weapons. It, you know, it kills me to think that the money I've been generating is going to this without it being my choice. I've been listening in and I support what others have said about some of the revisions to the language, to be more specific, especially in the title. But regardless, I am in great favor of this resolution and I really hope it gets passed for the Biden administration to see. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is a call-in user, number one. Go ahead, call-in user. If you can see the unmute or hear it.
Hello?
Yep.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello. My name is Lisa Pellerchair. I'm calling about the ceasefire resolution. I support the resolution, but with revisions that were suggested by Rabbi Bob, I especially think that you should include the words Palestine, Israel in there. We're not just talking about a vague area. We want to be specific. And also, I think that if you could put in there a cessation of shipment of arms to Israel, that would be helpful. But I would support the resolution with the revisions suggested by Rabbi Bob and also that this be a permanent mutual ceasefire. And thank you for bringing this resolution back again. Let's make it a little bit better and I really support it and I thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
All right. Our next. One more? We have four more now, but I can pick the last one that was original if you want.
Well, we have till 27/23. So, let's keep going.
Okay. We'll start from the bottom. Tamara, go ahead, Tamara. Tamara, Tamara, go ahead and unmute. There you go.
Hello. My name is Tamara Kriegel and I've been living in Arcata for 17 years. And I'm going to call again for everybody that wants to dialogue with me in peace, about peace. I'm happy to talk to them. I don't find the resolution is the right method to solve any of the issue. But I'm going to accept it as something to put aside all the heated conversation. I'm having a hard time with the word ceasefire, because it's a very boiling word and Hamas do not accept any ceasefire. But I don't really care. I care about our precious community. And I found a partner in our communities that I can dialogue with him. And this is what I care, that I wanted to dialogue with the people that really wants to dialogue, not the people that come. And every time that I hear the word, I wanted to say to the record, I'm a very proud Zionist. So, nobody can insult me to say to me that I'm a Zionist, because I'm very proud of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Daria. Go ahead.
Hello. Jeez. Okay. Hello, I just wanted to put it out there that I'm 13. I mean, okay. So, I just wanted to put it out there that I'm 13. And so, okay. So, I'm an Israeli-American and I'm also a proud Zionist. I feel like this resolution is unnecessary, because while it's important that we have peace in the Middle East, peace in our own community is more important right now. Since I last spoke in the city council meeting in December, I've experienced more antisemitism than I ever had in my entire life. When I spoke in December, I mentioned that I'm scared to go to school, because I'm Jewish and Israeli. Sadly, this fear became reality when I got attacked, not by a student, but by a teacher. Let that register. A teacher thought that it was okay to ask me if I would like to die, because I said to him, I stand with Israel and always will. However, I decided to accept this resolution, because my hometown recognizes mutual pain on both sides. These are the values that I'm growing up on, caring for Israelis as well as Palestinians. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Amon. Go ahead, Amon.
Hello, I'm Amon Armstrong. I'm a resident of Bayside. I've lived in the area for about 17 years. I want to thank you, council members, for your service and your patience as you hear arguments for and against resolutions related to the Hamas-Israel war. I support the current resolution, because I believe this issue should be put to rest. I do not completely agree with every word, but it is time to move on with healing in this community. It does nothing to help solve the deep, complex, and painful conflict 7,000 miles away, and it does not help the people suffering from it. Providing a platform for protest at your expense and creating division between normally peaceful groups should not be the role of council members. Another forum is needed, for where shouting slogans and spray painting walls is not the only form of communication. This only creates more antisemitism and hate. I've seen it in my own family, in our schools, and in our streets. It's time to come together in a more intelligent way. It's time to come together in a more intelligent way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Leid Lodge. Sorry if I got that wrong. Go ahead.
You got the, okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
First, I'd like to point out the ridiculous irony that this council, as a representative of the white settler colonizers of these lands, is asked by the anti-Israeli crowds to vilify a state of persecuted minority because they misconstrue them as white colonizers while they are neither of those. I'm also wondering if you think that the anti-Israeli crowd would stop chanting the genocidal slogan "Free Palestine" if all Israeli meetings were open with a performative land acknowledgement as this council does. Nonetheless, I'd like to thank the council for hearing the community on both sides on this topic and trying your best to encourage civil discourse and peaceful mindset. I personally still believe that any statement on foreign policy by this local government is not only completely inappropriate, it is also moot. And these continuous attempts to shove one down your throats are outrageous wastes of public time, funds, and resources. I found some of the language in this resolution is still problematic, in particular suggesting that babies kidnapped over the tortured, raped, mutilated corpses of their family should be exchanged for convicted criminals rather than be released as part of the ceasefire action. However, in spirit of compromise and hope for less unrest in our community, I'm here to encourage the council to adopt this resolution.
Thank you.
All right, and our last online speaker is Gary. Go ahead, Gary.
Hello. I'm Gary Glimfield, and I want to thank the whole council for coming up with a resolution that is balanced enough to be acceptable for, for everybody. And therefore, I do support it. And I think the timing is also very good as now, you know, a call for a ceasefire needs to be heard by Hamas, who is the party that's refusing it at this point. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I am going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. First, before we go back to the council, I would like to thank everybody for being civil and for sharing your feelings. I know this has not been easy, but I appreciate everybody's calmness. All right.
I, I would support this with these amendments. It seemed like those are pretty widely supported by folks that made comment tonight. And also, I think just really at, at this time, it's, it's more important than ever, as we heard during our public comment, to recognize Palestinian identity and self-determination. And I think that's an essential part of having a ceasefire resolution. So I, I support these, the amendments from the Rabbi Bob, just, you know, because they include that, that piece about ceasefire and actually uses the word Palestine, which I think is, is really important. And, and I would support the change, if we don't want to get too, too changy, but of, of adding permanent or a lasting ceasefire to that bullet point, that first bullet point that says an immediate, mutual, and permanent or, or lasting, whatever language folks prefer. Permanent, it sounds great. Optimistic, but permanent, it sounds great. So, yeah.
Well, I would, I think if I understand, I, I would second your motion. You would add Gaza, behind supplies to Gaza.
It wasn't a motion, really, but discussion.
We're still talking, Alice.
But we do want to hear your opinions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you, or not.
You can. Okay.
Well, I, I do like the three amendments that were brought to us by Rabbi Bob. I'm fine with that. And I also do agree to add permanent or lasting. I think I was hesitant coming in to make changes just because it's so important to me. I feel like that we come up with something that we can pass. I didn't want to get to make too many changes and have us end up in a situation where we're debating and it doesn't have a good chance of passing. So I'm, I am, you know, for those four changes. And, and I just wanted to speak to the process for a minute. I do also appreciate the tone of folks in the room tonight. I was actually surprised. It's not how I saw it happening, and I'm pleasantly surprised, so thank you. But just to understand a little bit or to give you some insight of what it's like to be five people trying to represent, you know, 19,000. It's not so much about that I changed my mind. I don't think I ever personally said how I felt. I, I have always, in all these processes, shared with what I've heard from constituents. And up until this point, it's been difficult because from the very first time we, that we brought, brought it forward and we're trying to pass something, it was very divided. There wasn't a clear path forward. And I feel like part of our job is, you know, is to find that common ground the best that we can and to, to work through a process. And I understand that it's been frustrating and tiring for some of you. Yeah, we, we get frustrated and tired as well. And, and sometimes that's how the best things happen. And I feel like I'm personally, you know, after working with the mayor on, you know, taking bits and pieces of what people had suggested in the community and, and various thoughts, to put this together with something in mind that I was hoping that all five of us could agree upon, and that is still my hope. And I feel like we, we did a really good job. I felt comfortable walking in to support it. I do like the changes that have been brought up. But I just, you know, want to be clear, it's not so much about, you know, and I'll let my colleagues speak for themselves, but for me, about me changing my mind or, or me being afraid to take a stand prior to this, that's not what it's been about at all. It's about, it's been about for me, what is best for Arcata. And it took a long time to get to this spot, unfortunately, just because this was a tough one. This was not an easy issue. It's still not an easy issue. And I feel like we're at a place today where I can, where I hope that we can feel really good about this and that we can move forward and we can continue dialogues and we can continue to be peaceful and to be respectful of one another. So to me, it's just been about process. It's not personal. It's been about the process and what is best, trying to navigate something for 19,000 people to feel okay about or good about. And I understand that in doing that, you know, there are lots of people that think that we, you know, we've got hundreds of emails over the past two weeks about this. And there are lots of people that don't think we should be doing anything, and there are lots of people that think we should be doing more. And so I feel like this really strikes a good balance in the middle for our community. And so I, I, I appreciate all the comments and all the thoughtfulness for this evening.
And I just want to add to that point, Stacy, too, that, and the Brown Act makes that very hard, too, because we're only allowed to talk to one other person. So we're, you know, giving emails to the city manager saying, I like this resolution. Make sure this part's in there when you're talking about it, agenda setting, you know. And so really trying to, you know, be up here and talk about it and be within the confines of that as well makes it, you know, hard to know what's going to be on the agenda or what language as well. And so I, I appreciate the, the mayor and, and your work and, you know, all, all the work of the council on, on, you know, getting to this point. So thank you, folks. And thank you, community members, too. I know we had some very active community members that were revising and sending things in and, and working hard, so thank you.
I just want to say that, you know, I have probably been the most resistant out of anyone to put a resolution on the agenda. I think that, you know, our job is to focus on the business of Arcata. I think that we have a lot of work here to do. However, I have really appreciated a lot of the connections I've made and a lot of the conversations that I've had. And I put this on the agenda because I think that it's something that Arcata really wants and needs. So, you know, I just really appreciate everybody. And I really, I just want to get back to work. I just want to do the mid-year budget review and I want to... And so I just really hope that we can, when and if this passes, that it takes the steps that Arcata needs to heal ourselves and to work together and to start over and let us just get back to the job of, you know, making decisions that are applicable to our local government. And I am also fine with Rabbi Bob's suggestions.
So I, I agree with the amendments to the, to the motion. And, and I think about the world, and we have so much conflict going on in so many different parts of the world. It's just, this is just one. And it's, and I always believe that we have to do our best at home and run our lives as best we can and take care of our city as best as we can. And that's our jobs to do that. And that's where I come from, is if we can make, make things work well in our community at the local level is where you can make the most change. And it's harder to make change as you go up the ladder to other governments, county, state, you know, federal. And so I think it's really wise for us to do as much as we can within our city and take care of us ourselves. And that's where I come from. And, and I would support this motion with the amendments that were made, and I would move for it. But anyway, you're next.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to say that there were not hundreds of emails. It was closer to 1,000. I stopped counting at 800, and that was in one week only. I could not have conveyed it any better than what Stacy said with regards to, I did not change my mind, but rather, I didn't voice my personal opinion. What I wanted to do was to represent the people. And so that's what I was conveying, is what I was hearing from the constituents. And what I had hoped for was to do what was best for Arcata. And this is seemingly best for Arcata. I would like to see an additional item calling for the US government to use its influence and to act in support of these recommendations. So a permanent ceasefire, I like that. And absolutely, yeah, all three of what you said there, Rabbi Bob. I concur. And, and yeah, ready to move on and heal as a community here. Thank you.
So I would make a motion to add those items to the motion, which the resolution is 234-36. Now, are we going to, you've typed that in, Karen? Did you do that?
Yeah, there are the three that were put forth by Rabbi Bob, and then the addition of, and permanent in the first.
Well, Sarah brought up lasting, so do you want immediate?
She chose permanent.
Okay.
Hope we can go back to that language.
I'll second that motion for, as amended up here in front of us.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilwoman Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's get back to work. All right, let's take a five-minute break.
All right, we're coming back. We're going to the consent calendar, all matters. On the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for a separate discussion. A is approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of February 21st, 2024. B, bi-weekly report on disbursements. C, approve an agreement with Oscar Larson and Associates Consulting Engineers for engineering design services for the coating of water tank number four in the amount of $59,600. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount for up to 8,940, 15%, for a total not to exceed $68,540, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. D is adopt resolution number 234-35, incorporating a list of projects for fiscal year 2024, 2025, to be funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. E, request the annual engineers' report and preparation of notices to declare the city's intention to continue to levy and collect assessments of existing assessment districts to include Mad River Parkway Business Center Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, Winsong Subdevelopment, I'm sorry, Winsong Subdivision Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, and James Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance Assessment District. Item F, adopt resolution number 234-37, authorizing the destruction of certain city records maintained by the city relating to the Finance Department as permitted under Section 34090 of the California Government Code and the Secretary of State's Local Government Records Program. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
And then I will move for adoption of the consent calendar.
Hold on, hold on. Does any member of the public want to remove anything from the consent calendar? All right.
I still move for adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman, and a second by Councilmember White. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? I don't think so.
No.
All right. All right. Now for the fun part. New business, item B. Consider adopting resolution number 234-34, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, accepting the mid-year budget review and approving budget revisions for the fiscal year 2023-24. Can we get a staff report from Finance Director Tabitha Miller?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Before we get started, something I just wanted to mention is that there shouldn't be any surprises in the mid-year budget update this evening. Most of the information, most of the trends are things that we've talked about quite a bit over the last year and really are continuing. You'll see again the same theme, which is, you know, a pretty, a record amount of capital projects going on and funding for that. You'll see things like the pension paydowns coming back up because they're in this year's budget. But other than that, it's a pretty stable, there's not, there shouldn't be any surprises. But certainly, if you have any questions as we go through, I'm happy to discuss those with you. Just a couple of the things that we're really looking at doing tonight, and we'll be pretty brief.
Can I, can I hold, is there any way to get this on our screens? Oh, bless your heart. Thank you.
Okay. So the first item is essentially just an update and review of the current budget. This is a, it's a process for you to get to check in and see where we're at. You'll see some recommendations for unanticipated expenses, a couple new projects, and some refined revenue projections. We will preview the prior year's budget. You'll get an idea where that ended up. And then we'll do a very brief outlook at looking at the next year's budget. This is really your opportunity to kind of think about the City Council goals and what you want to see in the next year, and start formulating those so that when we come back to you in a very short period of time, which is just a couple months off, we're ready to hit the ground running and we can incorporate those into your budget. So you do have a fairly large dollar amount of budget adjustments that we're asking you to approve this evening. I've broken out and kind of summarized them by category. The, many of these, including the capital transfers, the purchase orders, the rollback and the roll-forward budgets, all relate to capital projects or smaller projects that were not completed in the prior year, and that the funding that was unspent was moved into the current year. So many of those projects relate to that. We've got a good chunk of them, about halfway down, our largest number, which is the revenue offsets. So most of those are either expenses that are associated with grant, reimbursement grants, so that we had, we missed one side or the other of the equation. And in some cases, there are actually new grants that didn't exist when you adopted the budget at the, in June of last year. So those are things that, or they have a revenue, a direct revenue offset where we're spending money that will either be reimbursed or recouped through services provided. The other, the last item, mid-year adjustments, these are really going to reflect the few new expenditures that we're asking you for. We've done a good job of itemizing some of those in the staff report. And on the next slide, I'll also walk you through those. But those are actually sort of the new adjustments to the budget that are not really reflective of prior projects or prior expenses that were unspent. And if you look at the numbers, you'll notice that between the revenue increase and the expense increase, there, you're actually to the good overall for the city of about just under $800,000. So we also take an opportunity at mid-year to look at where our revenues have come in, and we'll adjust those. Most of those adjustments in each revenue, I can tell you, are very minor. They just add up to a nice, almost $1.2 million. So just to highlight some of the items that we are requesting from you, and most of these are one-time. Probably the largest one is, we're asking for $246,000 to cover retirement leave cash outs. I think you're pretty aware that you have several long-term employees in significant positions that will be retiring in this current fiscal year, maybe next. We also are anticipating several next year. So this figure, whatever's not spent this year, we will ask that we roll it forward to the new fiscal year, and I might even be adding money to that. Just so you know how we're at, we're taking care of that. Those funds will actually reside in my department, and then we'll allocate them out as folks leave. So it won't be spent on anything but cash outs, so. We've got one new position. It's a three-quarter time position that we're asking for, for the Water and Wastewater Mechanic 2 position. And this is really being driven by the increases in automation and systems that our water and wastewater folks are maintaining. You know, if you remember, we are also upgrading many of our facilities, including the wastewater treatment plant. And this is just to try to keep up with the demands of all of that new technology and those new machines. We have a one-time $25,000 to cover the insurance deductible for stormwater damage at the Lakewood Residential Apartments. We have $128,000 in total in increased utilities costs. These are really a couple of things. We've got parks and recreation facilities where the PG&E fees are causing that. In addition to that, we're anticipating an increase of $68,000, again, for some of the new facilities at the wastewater treatment plant. The UV system is just more energy, a bigger energy user, and so those are driving those costs up. We've got $140,000 in increased fuel and bus maintenance costs associated with the Cal-Poli Green and Gold Route. This will be offset by revenue. We've got $60,000 on one-time expense for outdoor event support, and this is really to just make those events safer and also easier to put on. So it includes a trailer, much easier, lighter weight traffic, and ballots and signs so that they can be put up and taken down much easier. Ballards that can go on the plaza, and, it's not me. And also on 11th Street, so that should be a good increase. We've also got $40,000 for the City Hall Plumbing Upgrade and Break Room Project, which you can see the start of out in our lobby. Unfortunately, we had a street light that was damaged, and we do not know who caused the damage, so we're going to have to pay $12,000 ourselves to get that fixed. We've also seen an increase in abandoned vehicle removal costs in the police department. And then we're asking for $50,000 for engineering services for water tank for rehabilitation. I'm not going to go through these definitions. These are actually definitions I have put forward before to you. But the one I would point out is the fund balance. This is really that, it's kind of a one number that you can take a look at to see how different funds and the city as a whole is doing. It's really the accumulation of revenues minus expenditures for all prior years, and it gives you an idea of what resources are available. I realize that there are lots of numbers on this, but it is the overall picture, all funds summarized. You can see the totals at the top of your revenues by classification, and then expenditures below that. And again, there's not any real surprises. I'll draw your eye down to the very bottom where we look at the increase/decrease in blue there in the fund balance. We did know when you passed the budget that you were looking at a deficit budget. Again, that's those capital projects, many of which are being carried forward from prior years. It also includes the $5 million in paying down the CalPERS debt. So there's some expenses that we were well aware would be pulled out of reserves or fund balance. But you're still in a really healthy, even if you look at the total budget amount, you're still looking at a total of over $40 million in fund balance available. And that's if you spend everything that you've budgeted this year. Going over to the right-hand side, I have projected year-end totals. And you'll notice that those, for the most part, especially when it comes to the expenditures, are lower. Those are my projections. And I'll tell you, this is just something that, when you ask departments about their expenditures and budgets, they're not very willing to give up budget. And so these are my projections. I will tell you that both the capital outlay and intergovernmental revenues, the top two that are highlighted in yellow, most likely, anything that's not spent this year will be carried forward to next year. And when we look at the next slide, you'll see kind of the way that worked last year, which is, it ends up sort of increasing what your total budget is from year to year because you're budgeting it over and over again. But that's typical and pretty, pretty consistent with the way things move forward. I wanted to just take a really quick view at what we, where we came in last year, and it also gives you that kind of perspective of sort of how things move from year to year, especially when we talk about capital projects. You'll notice, again, I've highlighted the same revenues and the same expenditures, with the exception of inter-fund and intergovernment payments. The top in the revenues, the intergovernmental revenues, those really are those reimbursable grants. And you'll notice that we had a very high budget number, and we came in a little less or a little more than half. And that was a direct relationship to the capital project line, the first line under expenditures, where we budgeted almost $34 million last year, but we only spent 18.8. So you have to spend it in many cases to be reimbursed. The other number, you can see the debt service, that $5 million is the CalPERS number in fiscal year 2024, and it was much lower, of course, in the previous years because we have pretty, pretty low debt ratios. And then I just wanted to point out on the inter-fund, intergovernmental payments, because there was such a big drop between '23 and the '24, that had to do with the Home Key Project, which was a $9.9 million total project, and most of that money was spent in the prior year, so. But again, the amazing thing, if you look at the bottom blue line, we budgeted last year to end up almost $6 million in a deficit, and actually ended up just under $1 million to the good all funds. So you're still in a good, solid place at year-end as of 6/30/2023. So just real quickly, we'll go through and just highlight some of the larger funds. Your general fund, again, not surprising, you are, you are budgeted to have a deficit of about $3.5 million. My estimate is that for this year, it'll be about $1.5 million. And again, some of those costs will roll forward into the new year. But you're really in a good, solid place as far as fund balance and your reserves. The unreserved fund balance is more than 50% of your operating revenues. And your operating revenues are everything but your capital and that one-time, those one-time CalPERS payments. So it's what you could operate the city on if we didn't do capital projects. Your reserved fund balance is now, is currently at 37%. We'll probably adjust it when we finalize the numbers. But when you put those two together, you have almost 90% of your operating expenditures in your general fund, which is, is a very good, solid number. I am very happy with that myself. And our policy is 30%. If you remember, last year, we increased it from 25 to 30%, and that would be a little over $4 million. Your special revenue funds, this is a summary of all 33 individual funds. It includes road tax, grants, forest, housing, economic development, ARPA, Home Key. And these are the funds that are generally money that we get, that are very specific to programs or projects, and some of them will cycle through in a couple of years, like ARPA and Home Key. And these are ones that we don't really, our goal is not to have large fund balances because we're typically given the money for a specific purpose, to provide those services and build those programs. And so a $5.4 million unreserved fund balance at the end of this budget year is a pretty good place if we end up there. This is an ARPA summary. It's also reflective of what is in, what's in your packet in your second quarter reports. I don't think there's any surprises. The projects are listed, the budget's there, and then what we project year-end to be. You will see that we will come in, the anticipation is that we will come in a little less than we budgeted. And at year-end, we are anticipating that there'll be about $665,000 remaining in ARPA funds, which is also not a bad place for us to be. We want those funds to be spent by the end of next budget year so that we don't have to give any of the money back, and that we can use them locally. Which brings me to something, just for you to consider, I'm not asking for direction, but this is sort of the recommendations for '24, '25 for your ARPA funds, and it's based on the priorities that you had set out when the ARPA funds were initially allocated. And also, when we've talked about programs that don't have ongoing funding, some of the priorities that have been voiced. And I would recommend that we take the $665,000 in the next year's budget, obviously continuing with the Woodman's Hall. It is italicized because I would like somebody to come up with a better name, but until then, I'm going to call it the formerly known as Woodman's Hall Community Center. So I'm giving you lots of reason to give me a better name.
Well, one of the things, though, when we were negotiating with them, or talking to them in the very beginning, you know, I mentioned, oh, we'll change it to something else, and their eyes got really big. And so Karen sort of said, we'll just keep it Woodman's Hall. So, and then you, once you, it's very difficult, like if you call it Woodman's Hall now, in a few years, you change it to something else, no one will know where you're going or what it is. So possibly, maybe I'll have a conversation with them about the change in the name.
Otherwise, it's going to stay formerly, you know, FKA.
The community's already calling it the Valley West Community Center.
I know, but that wasn't our agreement, so.
I'm just telling you what the community's calling.
No, I know, I call it BB. You, so I'll have a conversation with them and talk to them about that, and see the possibility, and maybe we'll have both names on it.
I'll leave that up to you guys.
For a while, well, we could for a while, because they still are operating in there, and they will be doing that for a period of time, and I, we don't know how long. So there is a way that could have two names.
Okay. The Ambassador Program, some money for Kuna. Of course, the MISS program has been very successful. The Special Assignment Sergeant that has supported both of those programs. And then the council special projects are really sort of what's left, and it gives you a little bit of money to think about if there's any other small projects that you may want to use these funds for. And like I said, that'll come back to you during the next year's budget preparation.
Could I just ask a question about the Ambassador Program, the $100,000? Is that, what is the current funding that we're doing for that right now?
So the, you currently have $150,000 budgeted. I have it estimated that you'll spend about $100, but honestly, I think that might even be an overstatement of where we end up when we get to year-end.
So that's why you've projected about $100,000?
Yeah.
Is there a possibility of a conversation of expanding that program yet?
I'm probably not the right person to answer that because I'm not the one that oversees that program, so.
I think that's something we'll probably talk about at goal-setting.
Yeah, we will definitely talk about that at goal-setting. I mean, I think it's that, these are still one-time monies. We're trying to bridge some programs that have been important to the council until we can have further discussions about potential November revenue measures, or how we want to consider ongoing funding for those in the future.
Well, and also, just because it's only the one-time money, we're, this is one of the important things that we're bringing to, to the tax measure that we're putting on the ballot, you know, because this is a very valued program from our community members. So we're wanting to let people know, this is one time, it's running out. So we're wanting to let people know, this is one time, it's running out. You like the program, and we know people want to see it in Valley West. And so that's what we really need to bring, to promote, so that we can hopefully entice people to vote for a hard vote of increased sales tax to have, you know, to keep these programs.
And they've just now completed the full complement of ambassadors, and so they just hired three new ones. So now we have the full staff.
Yeah. Yeah, so hopefully we will.
Have trained them, I should add that part, so that they can now be out on the working.
So your water fund, again, this is one of the funds that's being driven by capital expense. You've got $6 million, which is almost half of the budget allocated for capital. Your operating is about 43%, and then that debt service is that CalPERS payment minus a little bit of the debt that's actually in that fund. Your estimated unreserved fund balance is pretty healthy at 39%, but you still have a $7.1 million reserve for capital fund balance that is really, you know, that's essentially almost all of the money that ends up leftover in your water or your wastewater fund end up going for capital. But you're ending up, you know, in a nice, a nice, solid place. The wastewater fund, of course, we know that we've got a very significant upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. So you've got $23.3 million in capital or, you know, more than 75% of your budget. Your operating expenses are a small portion of what's actually budgeted this year at 5.3. It's about 17.5% of the budget. And then that debt service, again, is the PERS, that's one-time, CalPERS payment, that's one-time money. You have $2.6 million or 39% of your operating reserve is the unreserved fund balance. But we have moved much of that money to the reserve for capital replacement. So you've got almost $20 million set aside for the next phases of your wastewater treatment plant and other upgrades to the system. Just one final, and this is a small dollar amount, but I wanted to remind the city council that we had set aside $45,000 in this year's budget for community support. As far as I know, and what I have on my records, is that the only pledge that we've made is to the CERT training, the $3,000, which leaves $42,000 sort of available. And I am always happy to have people not spend budget and then have it go back into the coffers. I would, just wanted to remind you that it might be something you want to take a look at at a future meeting as a group. And with that, I can answer questions.
I have a question, probably not for you, but it's for our city manager. When do we start in goal-setting? Do we have any dates or am I too premature in asking that question?
Nope, you're not too premature at all. We will be sending doodle polls out. The mayor and I were just talking about setting dates once we got through this meeting. So we will be looking probably around the first week of April to get into goal-setting.
I don't, I don't have any questions because you made it so beautifully laid out for us. I appreciate it. But I did want to thank you, and I also wanted to thank staff because I know that it's a team effort to balance the budget. I know every department has lots of, you know, things that they want and ways that they could really spend money. And so I know every year, it's a negotiation and sacrifices have to be made. So I just want to thank everyone on staff for working together to have us be in such great shape.
What she said.
Yeah, thank you, Tabitha. I really always appreciate your staff reports. They're very concise and your explanations are great. I actually don't have any, I'm sad because I wanted to have like a long discourse about budget, but I.
Me too.
Honestly, I don't have anything to say, so thank you.
So I'll make a motion?
Oh, yes.
Is that what you're going to do, Alex? To consider adopting resolution number 234-34, accepting the mid-year budget review and approving budget revisions for fiscal year 2324.
I'll second.
Okay, before we do that, we should.
Oh, my goodness, we should take public comment. Let's do that. Public comment on the budget.
Good evening. Some time ago, I think our city manager actually wanted some money from you from the standpoint of some new software that was going to make things more transparent. So I'm just curious of what became of that and how the process became more transparent with that software. And example I would give is something that I brought up several times in the past, with the wastewater treatment plant, which originally you guys approved 54, 53 million, and then several other times it was increased. So there's a big banner in front of the wastewater treatment plant, so I know it's 64 million now. So that's a big chunk of money. And, you know, we should be seeing where we were at with that and how's that money being spent. It's money coming from the federal government, it's money coming from the state government. And, you know, I'm sure that it's, everything's probably legally is good, but I mean, it's just sort of like a big number and there's not a whole lot of documentation from the standpoint of, you know, for the council or the public of, you know, what's going on out there and with photographs. It's not like a negative thing. This could be a positive thing for you, showing how this money was spent. And I don't see any evidence, maybe, maybe there is some out there, but that's a big chunk of money. And also, it seems like, you know, you're generating a lot of money in the positive category from the standpoint of water and waste. And, you know, I had a little bit of issue with how, I think it was 1.5 million from each of those was going to pension. So, I mean, how is this being explained to the public from the standpoint? I'm sure most people, when you're asking for an increase, it's, you're probably pointing to, you know, we're having facility upgrades and that sort of thing. But to me, it seems like, I don't think that discussion ever has happened, and it's not quite transparent there. And I'm sure the public doesn't know about how you probably asked money for things to happen and change there, but then it went to a pension. I think they'd probably be shocked if they even knew about that. So I think we need to address those things. And the other area that I saw, I didn't see any income coming in from traffic enforcement. Is that, I mean, is that true, that there was no dollar amount coming in from citations issued from the police? Because I didn't see that on there. So maybe that kind of information is valuable for a lot of different reasons. There was an issue in a, never mind.
Thank you. And I do believe there is a tool online that we can view our whole budget.
There, there is, and I can, if you wanted me to show it, or we can actually have maybe a staff report in a future meeting where we actually walk through it a little bit.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
So I have to re-watch this on video later to totally understand numbers because it just gets too confusing for me. But I liked that community fund still having some money available in goal-setting. And I can think of a few things that we might be able to spend some of that money on, including considering maybe even just temporary Peace and Justice Center, maybe working with Equity Arcata or something for people to come and talk about issues like we've been talking about for a long time, so that maybe we won't have to use up a lot of council meeting time on issues that if we had a place to gather. So anyway, that's just one thing. I guess that's all I wanted to say right now because I, my brain's kind of going. But I will be back for public comment later.
Thank you. Are there any online Zoom comments? Okay, so we had a motion by Councilmember Schaefer and a second from Councilmember White. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And that brings us, thank you. I guess stay there because we'll call you back in a minute, huh? All right. Oral and written communications, the city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written comments on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements, supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes with, and a time limit of the overall length of oral communications might be imposed, but yeah. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you're on the phone line and you would like to make public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes.
Okay, continuation of what, the subject of matter that is brought up many times as far as the vehicles that are speeding, traffic violations. One of the reasons I asked for the data on what we're bringing in is because that's an indication of what's happening with the police on the street level. And I just read in Economist magazine, there was a big deal about this in San Francisco where they got data from the standpoint dollar amount showing for the last decade of, you know, what has happened and the amount of money that they were making. And then after, during COVID and after George Floyd and the protests, it went down to pretty much zero. That's a, that's a zero for the city of San Francisco. And the actual, the editor of the magazine called this the Mad Max situation because now, because there's nobody in San Francisco, you know, giving tickets for people speeding through red lights or just blowing through stop signs, everything's getting a little crazy from the standpoint of people dying on bicycles. So the reason why I'm asking about our city is because from a personal level, I don't know this is a fact, but just from my perspective of where I live and the things that I've seen and the things that I've reported, I don't, I don't see it happening. I mean, I don't see, definitely from the standpoint of the sound, the mufflers are just getting even worse. So people are empowered to do whatever they want. And I even had, I had a conversation with our city manager on this specifics, and she agreed with me, no one's being stopped from muffler standpoint. So just the issue is, how about the rest of the violations that I've seen, it just is like crazy town. I mean, the amount of vehicles that are just run into that are parked on the street, I mean, something is up. And I've done quite a bit of reading from, that I've shared a little bit from the standpoint, is it, is it because people are staring at their cell phones? Is it because people are high on whatever drug they are? But there's, there is a problem. And I unfortunately don't think you're taking it seriously enough because it seems like when it comes to this issue, you're, you're going after it from the standpoint that you want money from the state of California and the government for bicycle lanes, which I do support. But the problem is, a little bit of paint on the road, as they noted in this article, does not do anything for you. If you're not taking all these other issues seriously, it's a waste of time and money. The bicycle lane is not going to save you. You're going to be dead or you're going to be injured. So, you know, if, if we're not interested in this data, then that's a sign to me that we're not taking this seriously. And this has been a subject matter at meetings for quite, and goal-setting, so I want to see action.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and what happened tonight was very important. And I'm very pleased that we spent time tonight talking about something very important that's happening elsewhere in the world because it is affecting us here in our world too. In our community, I think of the young Air Force man who self-immolated. So what happens elsewhere does affect us here. And it's important that we recognize, and I've used this image before, that we all really are all connected in humanity, in the human family, all over the world. So it's important that Arcata gets involved in things that impact people elsewhere because it impacts those of us here in the community. I know it's impacted me, and you know it's impacted me. I want to also just share that I will talk at other times about things like a task force for homelessness and a zero waste issue and some other things, but I'm just too exhausted tonight. But I'm going to leave this here for all of us to know that we really have saved lives in what we did tonight. So there's some lifesavers here for us to take home. We really have done something significant. It's not performative, it's not a facade. And so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Do you have any, anybody else want to make public comment in person? Anybody on Zoom?
No online public comment.
Okay. So let's receive a report from Finance Director Tabitha Miller on vacant property tax measures and vacant property regulations.
Good evening again. So this is just sort of an overview of some of the vacant property tax measures that have happened in the U.S. And I thought it would be good to just start with essentially a definition. So a vacant, a vacant property tax is a voter-approved, charged property owners whose properties are unused or underused a financial penalty for letting the property sit empty. And really, it's encouragement for the owner to lease, redevelop, or sell the property, get it back into most productive use. I thought another good way to sort of explain and kind of look at what it is, is to look at some examples of cities that have already implemented, voters have approved vacant property taxes. And the only other one that I'm aware of that's actually been approved that's not on this list is Berkeley, and that was approved. And it went into effect as of January 1st, which is of 2024, which is the same as the San Francisco. Its measures are very similar, so I didn't put it up separately. But as you can see, the first line is how the amount is assessed. In San Francisco, the new tax, this year, it's $2,500 to $5,000 per property, depending on what type of property it is. And that will actually increase to double that next year and up to $10,000 to $20,000 per property in 2026. So it grows pretty quickly. Oakland has a similar, a little bit different structure, but it's $3,000 to $6,000. And they're actually taxing both undeveloped commercial and residential property under the vacant property tax. San Francisco does actually have a separate commercial tax that they passed two years before. That's $250 per window front or street front property, and that goes up to $1,000 per foot in 2026. Vancouver is interesting because when you, if you, if you read through any of the documentation, in particular, the San Francisco justification for putting their measure on the ballot back in 2022, they cite Vancouver, British Columbia as sort of the example and a success as far as it. Originally, it was 1% of the assessed value. It's now 3%. It is on residential properties. And one of the interesting things that they have touted, if you kind of walk down, they had approximately 7,900 vacant units, residential units when it started. Within the first two years, they've got documentation that shows that about 25% of those units were actually put back onto the market and leased. So they have called it a success. They've also, especially with the increase to 3% of assessed value, it generates about $23 million per year. It's actually a little bit higher, that's an average now than it was. And like San Francisco, they're also using that for affordable housing. So they're using it to plow back into projects. And it's, it's often referred to. They also have a very good website, they do an annual report. So if you're interested, I've got a link at the end, but it is one that I would take a look at because it is fairly successful. Washington DC has the oldest that I could find, other than there's a city in Spain that used it that I didn't use. But their focus was very different. It was more on blighted properties and properties that were bringing values down because they were being abandoned, not necessarily, but focused on increasing the rentals, residential rentals available. Just as a perspective, it's $5 for every $100 of assessed value if it's vacant, and it's $10 per $100 if it's a blighted property. The normal property tax in Washington DC is .85. So that means you're paying a tax that's at least five, you know, more than five times what you would normally pay or more than 10 times if your property is designated as such. It applies to commercial and residential. It's a little stricter, basically, if the property is not occupied, it can be declared vacant or blighted and taxed as such. But it hasn't been real successful in revenue. If you think about it, $9.4 million is the figure I could find for 2016. That's not a lot of, it's a lot of money for us, but it's not a lot of money for a city that size. And even, even the other cities here, when you, the San Francisco, 12 to 60 million is, again, a huge number to us, but it's not a large money to these cities. And part of the reason Washington DC may have had some issues is there were several articles that sort of challenged how it was being administered and arguing that, you know, they weren't, they really weren't focusing on as many blighted projects or properties as they had, and they were not, they were also not very successful in collecting on those. But. But it gives you kind of an idea of where we're at. One of the challenges, and I, I wanted to focus back on San Francisco, you'll see that they have a report that they did to the Board of Supervisors. Based on 2019 estimates, they have over 40,000 vacant residential units in the city. But keep in mind that they're only basing their revenues, the line above of that, on 4,600 to 7,300. And part of the reason for that is that most of the cities that have passed vacancy taxes have a pretty extensive list of exceptions. And I'll show you those on the next page. So you may-
Can I just ask a really quick question? On that 40,000, do we have any breakout, whether it's residential, commercial, a percentage of?
We, it's all residential, and there is a breakout, and the link there you can find, and I'll, I'll send it to you. But they break it out into, some of it are, are properties that are just between leases, some are second homes, some are properties that are for sale. So they've gone through and done a pretty detailed list of, of what those are. But in many cases, they're going to be, they're either going to be exempt, or they're not truly vacant, because they're not empty for half of a year, which is also one of their requirements. And really, that, that definition of vacancy is going to drive how many properties are going to be subject to the tax. The more days you allow it to be empty, the more exemptions you have, those sorts of things are going to really kind of narrow the properties that you're going to be taxing down to nothing. And in the big picture, let's remember that the goal, if the program is truly successful and all of your residential units are occupied, that's your goal, and you're going to have zero as far as revenue. I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's not really a big moneymaker, let's put it that way.
It would be a good problem to have. Can you define housing activation as opposed to like affordable housing?
Yeah, so there specifically in San Francisco with their, the housing activation is their term. But what it is, is it's focusing on low income, housing for seniors, and housing for homeless. And the, the Vancouver was very similar. So this is just a list, this happens to be from the city of Oakland, but it's typical of what I found in some, several of the other ordinances. Very low income as far as exemptions and exclusions, financial hardship, hardship unrelated to personal finances, exceptional specific circumstances, which is the catchall, essentially whatever the city manager would, you know, found was exceptional. If it's actively under construction, actively in a building permit application process, low income seniors, disabled owners, nonprofit organizations, and substantially completed application for planning. In addition to this, there were a couple of things, like some of them, if there had been a death of an owner and it was in probate, it was exempted. So there's quite a few things that can be added to exclude it for some period of time from the tax. One of the challenges, and I started to try to get an idea of how many properties would kind of fall under vacant in Arcata. And obviously, it'll depend on the definition that somebody put for it and how many days you allowed. But according to the Census Reporter, we have a 10% overall vacancy rate, which is about 83 units. But keep in mind, that does include things that are sort of between leases or for sale. So it may not be a permanent and, and may not be a, you know, a, a real vacant property. And one of the challenges is that when I talk to our building department and even to Victor, who runs the residential inspection program, you know, they're, they don't have, they haven't identified, you know, vacant properties, and they don't seem to have a real issue with it. So it is going to be a challenge, and it probably is a fairly small number. And if we looked at something like this, you know, we can rely on self-reporting, but that's really only as good as your investigation and enforcement efforts behind it. A couple other few things to consider, and I've kind of touched on most of these, you know, identifying the, the properties that are vacant after you define them. You know, we may not get any revenue if we're successful in this process. It is going to take staff to administer it. One of the things that Vancouver found is that the numbers they had, one of the reasons they came down to that 7,900 units was that about 75% of their housing units that are, are, would be vacant, fall within an exception. And so it really narrows again that number down. And if our numbers are correct, it would be about 21 units that would fall into the, the not being exempt. The other thing that had, they've found in many places is that vacant homes are some, sometimes especially second homes, maybe larger and higher value. And so they're not necessarily a great home to put back on the market if we're really trying, trying to house, you know, working families. And then these things have been plagued by lawsuits for constitutionality and property rights arguments. I don't know that anybody spends successful, but doesn't stop the starting. So kind of shifting gears, another aspect of this that can either be used in conjunction with vacant property tax or on its own, and certainly it's more prevalent on its own, is regulating vacant properties for some of the same goals. And I just did some searches and found many California examples. These are just ones that I came across. It's not exclude, you know, I didn't do it an all encompassing one, but there's many. And they have a lot of flexibility, and these are just some of the standards I found. It can, it can apply to both commercial and residential structures. A lot of cases, they require registration and they, they, they collect fees to cover the cost of that. It does set very specific standards for securing and maintaining the vacant structures. Some of them require that you have a local contact or manager that's available when you register it. And some go as far as actually setting out a timetable and a plan for returning the property to productive use. So again, it's that idea of getting it back into purpose and, and being useful in the community. Go ahead.
Is there any hybrid of these? Could that be possible?
There, there were every hybrid of these. That was just, that was, those are just some things. They were all a little bit different. Some strictly set standards, some were very specific about registering, some had plans, like it's really, any, if, if the council was interested in moving forward, you could certainly develop whatever worked. And there are, and, and not just in California, but, you know, across the country, there are many, many examples, so you can pick and choose. I use, this just happens to be Palm Springs, and I picked Palm Springs because they had a very nice website, and they had a lot of nice attachments that were easy to look at. And so it's a good example if anybody wants to look at it. But again, they apply to commercial and residential. You must register, they say as soon as possible, or no more than 10 days after it becomes vacant. And vacant to them is 35% or more of the total floor space is not occupied. They require a local property manager to be on file and to be accessible if there are issues. They have a commercial security fee of just over $2,200, and then a registration fee, which is about $43. And their residential registration is $43. So that's one of the requirements. And then they have very specific minimum standards for required preventative maintenance, and that's windows, lawns, garbage, like everything that you would expect, the, the outside coverings of the buildings, that sort of thing. And again, their website was, was a nice, easy to use resource if anybody's interested. And the code section is at the bottom there, too. So just some things to consider in looking at this for Arcata. San Francisco, Oakland, and Berkeley's vacancy taxes are very, very new, and so we don't really have any data on success or what that means, or statistics that we can use to sort of project out how this would impact us. And we are a much smaller community. I did run into a number of articles about other communities in the state that were, that had looked at them this year. Sacramento, I think San Diego, Los Angeles, all had considered but did not choose to place it on the ballot. There is, it is interesting, South Lake Tahoe has a citizen initiative that will go in November. And they're really targeting the, these second homes. That's, they, they are estimating that there's something like 4,400 second homes, and they believe that based on the tax rate that's set, that they'll bring in something like $32 to $40 million a year. But, but there's, that's, and so it'll be interesting to see if it passes, and then also just how it impacts their housing. And again, their biggest issue is that they've driven out, the, they've driven out their workforce. They can't live locally. I would, I would suggest, if you're interested, that maybe we look at a vacant property regulation ordinance as a first step. Something just as an aside to consider if you are interested in the vacancy taxes, they generally are going to be supported when you have a higher number of renters than property owners as far as voting for it. And we have 67% of the folks who live in Arcata are renters as opposed to owner occupied. The other thing, I reached out and talked to our folks on the residential inspection program, and they, just to get an idea of, of how many vacant properties we might have, how this might impact them. And one of the things that they were very clear on is that this is their first year of implementing that program, and they are gathering a lot of information. You know, they're using data from the county that may be dated as far as, as reaching out to see what rentals are, and felt like in a year, they might be able to provide better information and have a better understanding of what's vacant and what the issues are. It's also something that would allow us to kind of look at this in a bigger picture again. And then finally, I think if, if we're really looking at a vacancy tax to increase the residential rentals that are available in Arcata, we may want to go back and look at the short-term rental programs again, because there's, there is a pretty good pool of rentals in that program that potentially could be available for longer-term use.
So, you know, I noticed the, because I had a vacant apartment, which is now rented, but, and I had to wait a bit to get my appliances, so it was vacant for probably almost a month. And I, and then I started noticing how many other apartments are actually listed and, on Zillow and so forth. So if you have an apartment that is, you know, that you're, well, I was waiting, but would I list that? Would I come in and say, you know, I pay my $42, so I can just wait to get my tenant in there after I get my appliances?
I would suspect that we would allow you, if it, if typically, on that first page, you'll notice that anywhere from 50, it has to be, it has to be occupied, you know, some of them were, if 50 days afterwards, if it's been vacant for 50 days, it's subject to the taxes. Most of them were six months. So in that case, if we, if we did something similar, you'd have plenty of time for turnover, even, even if you had to do small remodels in between. And then, of course, if it's, you know, if you set up the exemptions for building permits, planning, those sorts of things, you, you wouldn't catch people who were, you know, really trying to do the right thing and improve their properties.
So I would think that we do have some vacant properties in Arcata, and I can all of a sudden think of ways to get around the law immediately.
And I'm sure there are. I mean, if you take, if you have-
I can think of them right away.
If you have, if San Francisco has, you know, 40,000 units, and they're looking at 10% of those being subject to the tax, there's probably lots of ways.
We're so much smaller, I don't think that there'd be a bang for a buck. I mean, yeah.
But I do think regulating it is a good idea. It might not be, and I like what you said, Tabitha, that if it works as a program, then it's not going to generate money, because we're not going to have any vacant properties. And so, you know, coupling small fees with, you know, regulations around vacancy, I think, is, is the good solution.
So what would that mean? Would that, would we direct you to kind of put together what that would look like? Or, I mean, I know it's a staff report, so we're not really-
So what it would probably, and I certainly, this is very interesting to me, so I'm, I liked this project. But on the other hand, it probably needs to involve our building department and our planning department, and folks who are really directly dealing with these issues, and making sure that we're, we're incorporating the, the nuisance ordinance that are already in place, you know, taking a look at the regulations that are already there to take care of some of these issues, and then being complimentary to the residential, you know, inspection program. And then again, probably looking at the short-term regulations and making sure that you're crafting a policy that sort of takes into account all of those things. But I think it is, it is direction from council.
Well, hearing you say that, that sounds like an awful lot of staff time for something that might not really be worth it.
Maybe there's another way we can, I mean, we, we have vacant, we're talking about vac, we have vacant parcels, too. But this isn't just dealing, this is dealing with vacant buildings. And I'm wondering if we could broaden it, because we know that we have some vacant parcels that are also very detrimental to-
And, and you can broaden it, and Oakland is one that actually has a tax on vacant parcels. So that, and there's an argument there, there's a whole theory that I ran into, which is that undeveloped property is really, is really pulling money out of a community, because it's not adding any value. And sort of the idea that, there's even an idea that property taxes on vacant property should be higher, not lower, because they're not generating income. But you could, there are examples of using vacant property.
So I hate to take this to the voters. I would hope not to have to do that, that we'd be able to handle that within-
You can, the regulations you can do on your own. If it's a tax, it has to go to the voters.
All right, I think Stacy had some information to add.
So a fee, a tax, a fee.
So there's, a fee is, we can collect a fee if it, if it offsets our cost of providing the service. So like regulating vacant buildings where we're just collecting the fees that cover the cost of, you know, making sure the building complies, registering, that sort of thing. That's, that we can do, you can do that on your own. But if we wanted to do a vacant tax where it's more of a penalty and it's above and beyond our costs, the voters would have to weigh in on that.
Well, I, I think that, you know, we always have a lot of goals every year, and we have that coming up, and maybe this could be something that's on the list to be discussed, because it, you know, it is an interesting idea, but it sounds like it does involve a lot of staff time. It might have, you know, minimal returns, and so maybe we just wait until goal setting to see, you know, how it shakes out with all of the other things that we want to accomplish.
I think that's a great idea.
I just want to, and because I think this fall, one of our goals may be is to have an economic strategy plan, and maybe through that economic strategy plan, this would be one of the things that they would look at, is vacancy parcels and buildings, et cetera, and how that's impacting us. And then we'd have some backup to do whatever we might have to do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a really good presentation. Can we have access to your links and everything? Great.
I will go ahead and send it out to you, and I'll make it available. And the links are on the last page, so.
Thank you so much. All right. Now let's go to, are there any other staff reports?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull up, I don't have any idea what that saying, oh yes, whatever I want to do. Well-
Same.
Yeah. Resolution? What resolution, though? All right, so at your last council meeting, a question came up around ridership from the free passes that we have required on the two housing developments that have had those. So Nature pulled these numbers, our city engineer did. So we have Sorrel Place, and then we have the UROC Indian Housing Authority, the 30th Street Project. So I think we have about 90 units overall. Is that about right, Nature? And of those units, we've ended up giving passes to 88 different individual riders. So these numbers are for the 2023 year. Total rides of those 88 riders is almost 6,000. Almost 70, over 75% are regional on the RTS, 7, 8% in the Eureka Transit System, 15% in Arcata, and five rides over to Willow Creek. But I think that overall figure of 6,000, I think, was pretty surprising to all of us when we pulled them, so I just wanted to share that data with the council.
That's awesome. Hey, could, oh, oh.
So if I could make a comment, because I serve on HTA board for you all, and what, when the, all of these are marked, so they know exactly where they came from. So where, what development they came out of, and they know, because it's tagged, and they can look it up on a daily basis, and they can give you the information. Oh, from there, we had so many riders today. So it's very specific.
Sorry, I just wanted to jump in and share some good news, because we, you know, this, this is great news already, but the bad news is that the, the grant that's paying for this is running out this year. And so then the greater news is that Jen asked our, our reps if we could front-load these. And so she's worked with HTA, and they're going to allow us to purchase three years in advance. We're going to be able to do this again for another three years.
Awesome. Yeah, Jen.
That's good.
Awesome. So I, we good with that item?
I just, you lost me at front-loading. Sorry, it's getting late maybe for me. Can you explain that?
We're just, we're going to be able to do this for another three years.
They're going to pay in advance.
Yeah, we're going to pay for them in advance.
Got it. Okay.
All right. Can we move on from this? Hey, I just want to ask, because Netra's here, do we have any idea when 8th and 9th Street are going to start to be one-way?
Depending on the weather. So as soon as they need about a five-day window to do the striping. So if you see five days of sun, be ready to drive one-way.
Awesome. All right. I think that's going to take us to councilman reports. Let's be crazy and just popcorn it out. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. We're starting at this end. No. A couple of things, RCEA is having a heat pump workshop. It's going to be at the D Street Neighborhood Center this Saturday, 8:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. Great opportunity to learn about converting your house, rebates, hear from experts, all that. And on the Equity Arcade front- front, there was the successful Home Away From Home event this Sunday, this last Sunday. Also, great success with the International Film Fest that happened. And then just that this week is the Social Justice Summit up at Cal Poly Humboldt, going through this week into the weekend. And Kinte Johnson and I are now the co-chairs of the Equity Arcata newly-formed board. So that's exciting as well. And then also, there's going to be a Chamber Mixer tomorrow, 5:30 to 7:00, out at the Farmer's Market, North Coast Growers' Harvest Hub out off Erickson Way, out off West End. So should be a lot of fun. Always love a first Thursday.
I don't think I have any at this time.
I don't think I do either, except for Stacy and I are going to Cal Cities on Friday, talk about some legislative updates, and talk to our colleagues in Northern California. That's all I have.
Okay. I just wanted to say that the green and gold ridership is up that we have that's operating in Valley West for Cal Poly, and I think that's really great. And of course, I have this thing about headlights not always being, you have one taillight, you have one headlight, maybe you have, I don't know, most people have one light. And so I did write the police department about that, and I also mentioned, put the city manager into it, because it just, I just can't get over how many cars are like this. And maybe, maybe I should stay home, or I should do something where I can't see anyone driving in the evenings or at night. It's just, it's pretty amazing. And it's, it can be, it's detrimental. And I was going to mention the food hub at Chamber Mixer also, and I think that'll be really interesting because of the different things they've been able to do out there, and how they've collaborated, and how many different groups are now renting that space. So I think that was, oh, that's all, really?
I'm excited about that food hub, too. So I got to attend a, an advanced California Environmental Quality Act sequence training. And there was good treats there, too. So I went to Redwood Region Economic Development Committee, and our guest speaker was at the wrong place. It was a good topic. It was about the unhoused, but they were looking for, sir. And I also attended my very first REDEC Loan Committee Board Meeting, which was a lot of fun. Got to approve a loan. And we did a Valley West cleanup. And there was something you didn't report. There was that incredible Chamber Leadership Dinner sent between, well, it was between our, anyway, y'all did, outdid yourself, Community Development Deputy Director, Jen Dart, just outdid herself on the decorating of the pirate theme. Everybody came in their best pirate outfits. It was wonderful, wonderful food. I just want to remind folks of the celebration of the International Women's Day, Zero to Ferris, that's happening this weekend at our Playhouse Arts. And it is inspired, created, and produced by women. Oh, and my almost 18-year-old Prius is back on the road. But I did learn a lot with it being down about, we need a more robust bus system. And it's kind of like, you can't do A till you do B. We need more riders so that we can get a more robust. So I encourage everyone, whether you have a car or not that's working, hop on that bus, maybe try some evening routes, try to get yourself to and back from Eureka, and see how that serves you. And, yeah. And then also your decrease in your carbon footprint. So I guess that's all I've got.
And we need more housing. We need more people, more ridership, and we have to have more housing in order to make it really work. And that's a constant thought process going on all the time in all the cities about it.
All right. So let's talk about dates of future meetings. I believe we need to set a date for a study session with the City Committee and Commission Chairpersons.
We do, but I'm going to be sending out additional doodle polls, because so far, the doodle poll we had, there is not a night that you can all five make it. So, yeah. So we might be sending out some of the dates again.
I know we do all work, honestly. Great meeting, everybody. We're adjourned.